Welcome to the TC Palm Editorial Board Meeting to interview candidates for Vero Beach City Council. With eight people running for three seats, we have broken out interviews into three groups. I'm Larry Reisman, columnist and community editor, and I'm joined by fellow editorial board members Adam Neal, our editor and news director, Blake Fontanay and Ed Killer, columnist, and Louise Philippine, a reader advisory board member. Special thanks to our candidates today for meeting with us and streamlining this process by completing questionnaires ahead of time. Board members have reviewed them and worked together on a list of questions for the candidates. Questionnaires and replays of our editorial board interviews can be found at tcpalm.com. At the conclusion of this interview, editorial board members will discuss possibly writing an editorial to recommend a candidate in this race. I'll lead the questioning and open it up to other editorial board members at the end. Our goal is to be completed because there are three of you in about an hour. But still, because of our time constraints, we ask that you keep your answers concise. So we'll start the questioning in alphabetical order with John. What are the three biggest issues facing the city of Vero Beach?
From my point of view and talking with stakeholders in the community, it appears that the Three Corners Project, the relocation replacement of the sewer plant on the western bank of the Indian River with the new water reclamation facility at the airport, and a recent development is the referendum that Ms. Larkin put forth, that's currently on the ballot, that would put a major crimp in the daily operations of the city, particularly as it relates to all of the parks and all the listed properties in the charter.
Thank you. Bob, what do you think are the three biggest issues?
Well, I guess I think a lot of them resolve around the lagoon and the things that we need to do to improve the lagoon. That's clearly one of the long-term objectives that we all need to keep in front of us and programs in place to improve everything. And that's everything from the stormwater utility and funding it and so forth. And as John mentioned, the moving the wastewater plant off the lagoon and moving it out to the airport are also very, very big issues, if you would. And again, all related to that, they're all kind of tied in, if you would, and the Three Corners properties and what we do with them and how that referendum turns out to be in November.
Thank you. Tracy?
So I would say that it's Three Corners, Three Corners, Three Corners. And just like the sale of the electric, water and sewer actually falls underneath Three Corners. So relocation of that and also the health of the lagoon and doing Three Corners fiscally responsibly, that all falls under the Three Corners. So Three Corners is the one, two, and three.
Thank you. We'll start with Bob for the next question. We'll dive a little deeper. What would you like to see happen as we progress in connection with the Three Corners the city owns at Indian River Boulevard and Seventeenth Street? Do you support the referendum that would direct the council to pursue the plan?
No.
No, okay.
Not on record, pardon?
I know, I was gonna say-
I voted against. I was the only one who voted against it.
Exactly. So what would you like to see happen next?
I'd like to see this referendum turned down. And then another referendum, I would like to see a restaurant there and some other amenities like a river walk and so forth. One of the things that really stands out to me is that 68% of the people voting 15 years ago on a referendum that only included those two properties, they put them in the charter to protect them from this kind of development that's being proposed. And secondly, a survey that was done at that particular time by Duane and the so forth, when they asked people to rank what they wanted to see and most wanted to see on the lagoon, a restaurant was fairly high up, but any kind of residential units, hotel condos, townhouses, were very, very low on the agenda. Again, I think that a good development down there will keep a lot of the space available to the whole general public and not limited to just kind of the people who are staying at the hotel or living in houses or residence.
Thank you. Tracy, would you like me to repeat the question or do you think you have it?
I think I got it. I fully support the referendum. I think it's important, and you see that in how many people were engaged in the process of Three Corners and the visioning process. The Standing O Plan was the Standing O Plan for a reason. It basically brought the entire community, not just city members, but the entire community together to create a plan that encompassed all of the different things that the community wanted to see there. This is going to be the social hub of our community. We're going to be able to come together. It's going to be one of those things that really is going to be a fantastic legacy for our community. And I think that in doing this, it really does draw your attention on the current divisiveness and how moving forward with the Three Corners is going to bring our community closer together. Unites the barrier island and the mainland together, which I think at this point in time is so super important.
Thank you, Tracy. John?
I fully support the referendum for the Three Corners Project. As Tracy said, the community involvement in developing the plan that was approved by council back in February was the first, I've been here 17 years, is the first time that I saw that many stakeholders actually commit. And we had young people, old people, people had been there their entire life. And it's just something that I hadn't seen before, which I was very happy to see that kind of interaction. But one thing that Bob mentioned was, you know, more parks, more parks. We have a lot of parks. The thing we don't have is any restaurants, bars, any kind of place where the citizens of Vero Beach can go congregate on the river. I mean, we have a beautiful river. Fort Pierce has a nice area, but they have many, many restaurants there. We have one riverside. The other ones are private. So any Joe Q public doesn't have the opportunity to sit to go with their wives and kids to sit at a park-like setting or in the restaurant and have a glass of wine. And the other thing that I want to add is that, you know, if you look at the plan in its entirety, once the treatment plan is replaced by the new water reclamation facility, that whole area is going to be basically a park-like setting with, you know, framed on the south by the new sailing center, which is, you know, going to be privately funded. So I think that all in all, it's the best plan possible that I've seen for that property.
Thank you, John. Tracy, we'll start with you on this question. What do you think of the citizen initiative on the November ballot?
I think it was a bad faith effort on their part. They went before the city. The city worked really hard with them to come up with a plan after there were a lot of complaints from people in the community and the neighborhood. And after all that discussion, they decided to take what was the best plan, which was the largest dry storage, and downsize it to meet, you know, the desires of that particular group. And then they go ahead and turn around and create this referendum, which is basically going to obstruct daily, you know, objectives of our city. I think that, you know, the city did a really good job of listening. And they did special called meetings, a special called meeting to bring everybody in, to make sure everybody understood in the community what this entailed. And then, you know, there were people in that room that don't normally agree on things, and they were all unanimous in fighting this referendum being on the ballot. I think that, you know, the community itself wants a state-of-the-art, environmentally-friendly marina with all the upgrades that we can be super proud of and that is user-friendly, not only by our community, not only by our community, but by the people that come to visit us. And this referendum impedes that. And many of the leaders that are part of this group were also part of the group that didn't want the sale of the electric. So there's a certain amount of disingenuous behavior happening. And those particular people have a track record of trying to obstruct what the city is trying to do, that they've been elected to do. And that is to move forward on the marina and, you know, to now come up with a referendum to try to impede that and do, you know, all these different things for the marina that's going to make it look amazing and make it even more environmentally friendly. I was very disappointed. So I would never have supported that.
Thank you, Tracy. John, what do you think?
Well, the referendum on its face value, I'm an engineer, and so I just read the words that it says. The way it's written, there's actually two components of this referendum. You can't agree with one and disagree with the other. You can't agree with both. I mean, the only way to do it is, if it gets on the ballot, would be to vote no for rejection. You know, I'm surprised that it got this far because a referendum is clearly supposed to be easy to read and understand and that there would be no interpretation of the referendum. This does not meet that requirement. So I would vote no. And I agree that, you know, there was a lot of time spent by council in working with the residents of the Live Oak Road neighborhood. And it went all for naught, appears, at this juncture.
Thank you, John. Bob, what do you think?
Well, I'm just very disappointed that, as both John and Tracy said, the city council worked very, very closely with them. We met with them numerous as a council, and I met with them a number of times. Just I walked the area with a couple of them and so forth. And when it started out, it was just to mitigate the full size of the marina. And I thought the city council did an excellent job of trying to reach a compromise with the folks, if you would, by picking the medium-sized expansion, which, you know, gave us the economies of scale to run the dry storage unit, but without encroaching so far out on that bank lot beyond the Waddell-Williamson area and so forth. So I voted to go one step further than just opposing the referendum. I voted with council. We were unanimous to carry this forward and a legal proceeding to try to get a judge to disqualify it. There is precedent. We've had, just since I've been here, we've had a ballot that was then thrown out. And so I'm kind of hoping this one just kind of doesn't even get to a vote. So that would be my position on it. And it's just very disappointing. Going forward, I would like to work with those people to do. This is just the first phase of a multi-phase project to upgrade and modernize the entire marina. And I would like to work with those folks going forward to try to find some compromises in the different objectives as we expand the marina. This marina is one of the greatest assets we have in the city. It's a real gem, and we just need to add that for everything from economic stimulation to just enjoyment by all the folks just walking around that area.
Thanks, Bob. I think we go to John on this next question. So John, next year, how would you address funding and projects associated with the stormwater utility?
Well, I think the stormwater utility is a very sore subject with a lot of Vero Beach citizens. They don't like the way that the council ended up compromising the allocation of the costs to the lots. You know, one thing that, you know, as an engineer and a business owner, you know, and a developer, many of the newer projects are actually stormwater neutral. By that, I mean, the water is retained on-site for on-site treatment. It does not discharge to the right-of-way, does not discharge to lagoon. So in those instances, those people that spent the money to do the right thing during the construction of the project shouldn't be forced to pay a stormwater tax wherein they're not contributing to that stormwater runoff. That being said, I think that the projects that are currently proposed, you know, need to be funded. And the best way to fund them is to provide a correct avenue for analyzing each of the properties and determining what amount of water runoff they're contributing. In other words, the oldest properties, you know, on the beach side, all runoff into the streets. So they have 100% runoff off of their purvous areas. But, you know, I would say that a questionnaire should be sent out or a permit analysis should be done to see what properties actually are contributing to the problems and what properties are not.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, as you know, I was a very, very strong supporter of the stormwater utility. A lot of the communities, many of the communities around us have such utilities. They've been able to leverage having the utility with going after grants to support projects, stormwater projects in their areas. And I think we now have that ability to go out and try to leverage the fact that we have a stormwater utility. I really pushed forward, and I think the non-add valorem approach was probably the best one to do it. But the way that it's been implemented has been an incredible frustration to me. When I was pushing for it and all of my discussions with staff and everything else, I made it very clear that I thought this stormwater utility and the way we were going to fund it would allow people that had already done work, like some businesses in the area and some people that have kept their stormwater on their property, should get to mitigate the amount of the tax they pay. But the way the consultant was brought in, they were told to raise a million plus, and that's what they were regardless. So I'm going to work very, very hard over the next year with the city and with consultants if necessary to put in some programs with the stormwater utility so that people like corporate air that have spent a lot of money keeping stormwater on their property, putting them into dry areas that are dry now, but to retain property, they should get some credit against the proposed tax. And I think it doesn't, I don't think you need to be a genius to figure out there's some ways that the average homeowner that puts in a permeable paver driveway instead of asphalt or concrete should be able to get credit for that. And that brings up one other thing. Our current zoning laws require concrete or asphalt, and they've made it very, very difficult with the rules that we have in place now for somebody to try to even put in a permeable paver. They have to get special permission to do it. So there's a lot more work to be done on it. But the projects that we need to do to clean up the lagoon really need to be addressed. And to not address them and to talk about the importance of the lagoon and not talk about doing a stormwater utility and other things is disingenuous.
Thanks, Bob. Tracy, do you want me to read the question again?
If you don't mind, that would be great.
Next year, how would you address funding and projects associated with the stormwater utility?
So I think the stormwater utility tax, because that's really what it is, is unfair to the people, and especially the people who have already done the job of mitigating the storm runoff. They don't get any credit. So any new construction that's happened where they've done the effort to retain water, they're going to end up paying the tax. And I am all for stormwater projects that have a proven track record. We have funding for that. That's been set aside from the electric zone. I think people need to remember to do that. And we don't have to have a tax to get grant funding or to partner with other groups to make things happen and to make projects happen. You have to get creative. And I also think that, you know, asking a consultant to come up with a way to find a million dollars so that we can go ahead and, you know, figure out projects to spend that money on, when you don't really have a straight-up plan on how you're going to spend that money, it's just there, sitting there for potential projects down the road that you still have to figure out what those projects are, I think is a disservice to our community. Right now, during this time, like having new taxes, raising taxes, it's just unfair to our community. And I never would have voted yes for that, absolutely not. And I think that there are projects that can be done that are inexpensive and that could be pulled from other funding and partnered with other groups. And I think that's how we should look about doing these stormwater things, not by taxing our community.
Thank you. We'll start with Bob on the next question, which is, in light of the planned move of the sewer plant to the airport, what is your take on the proposed water and sewer rate increases?
I think they're absolutely essential. And I guess one of my frustrations there is to look back that, what's it been, 12 years since we've touched those rates at all? It really seems like prior councils have just kept kicking the can down the road, so to speak, and that we should have been looking at those rates and taking a look at the longer term instead of just all waiting here until the last minute, the last couple of years to do it. But if we're going to clean up the lagoon, if we're going to move the wastewater treatment plant off the lagoon, number one, I mean, it hasn't contributed to the lagoon in years either, but the movement off there and the opportunity to use that property better for the people of the city is tremendous. But the other thing, in terms of funding the move and so forth, the advantages of moving it out there and the cleaning up of the water more and the creating of reused water instead of pulling water out of the aquifers, those are all incredible benefits. And the new plant will be just that much better in cleaning up more efficiently and to a higher level of cleanliness for the phosphates and the nitrates that are even today coming out of the existing plant, not at the levels that they're going to have to be at in future years.
Thank you, Bob. Tracy, in light of the planned move of the sewer plant to the airport, what is your take on the proposed increase in water and sewer rates?
I don't think that we've actually fully vetted all of our options when it comes to relocating our water and sewer. I would like to see us actually look for potential partners to work together with before we even decide whether there needs to be a rate increase. I think that either, you know, a partnership with FPNL works great for the electric. Why can't we at least, you know, vet or look for options that are similar to that where the community benefits from the wisdom and expertise of somebody who's been doing it for a long time? Or even, you know, partner with the county to see if there's a better plan as an entire community, not just a city? Because we have to also take into consideration, we could move the facility off the lagoon, but does that actually, you know, project a plan of, like, you know, partnering with the county if there's expansion or, you know, other things that need to happen? I don't think it takes a long-term look at not only the viability of doing it that way as just alone, you know, just us as a city. I think we really need to vet all the options to look at potential partners that may or may not want to partner with us to do this.
Thank you, Tracy. John?
Yes. In my meeting two weeks ago with the city manager, I was very interested in following the history and the decisions that were made in regards to the water reclamation facility, being a new facility out at the airport. Rob Bolton met with the county on numerous occasions. The state always seems to get in the way of engineering, and they make these crazy rules and give you a short amount of time to meet it. Apparently, based on what Rob said yesterday at the council meeting and also the day before at the committee meeting, you know, he exhausted all of those avenues with the county and with the House bill and the Senate bill coming forward requiring additional nutrient removals, that is going to reduce the capacity of some of the county plants. And there's no current plan that has been put forth by the county to meet those new guidelines. So the fact of the matter is, that wasn't going to be a neutral, a revenue-neutral avenue, because it was going to cost, according to the projections that I recall, 30 to 35 million just to hook up to their systems because of all of the pump stations and the new piping that had to be done. And we were going to have to go to two plants versus one plant, which doubled the cost. So that's when the city council, you know, decided to go ahead and put in a new water reclamation facility at the cost of 60 million, you know, back earlier this year, and let the design contract. You know, unfortunately, as we all know, yesterday, inflation is going crazy, and the cost of chlorine and all the other chemicals are skyrocketing. Obviously, you know, construction costs are going up through the roof. Two things, material availability and labor shortages. Those things are not going to be correct themselves in the short term. I mean, this water reclamation facility is not even going to be online until 2025. You know, we're on the hook right now for potentially $7 million in just engineering costs alone, not counting the hard cost. And that's the new projections that were just presented the last two days, Monday and Tuesday. So in regards to the rate study, there was a preliminary rate study done last year. Nothing was passed. The rates were increased. I mean, looking at the dollars and cents straight up, going with this water reclamation facility, excluding the possibility of getting any grants, which I think there is, you know, plenty of money out in the state and nationally that we could get that money. But they've got to base, they base their boat on the figures that are there and the way the figures say, come up to, you know, the rate that they've proposed. So I mean, I think they had to pass it. You know, I'm not happy about it. I think that Mr. McCabe had a good point. How does this city come up and kick the ball down the road so many times? So many times, you know, it's just like, we're not running a business. We're actually not paying attention and running a business. And I think, you know, you just need stronger leadership, people that know what's going on. I mean, if I didn't raise my rates every year, I would have been out of business probably year four. But fortunately for the city, they have a customer base that's tied to them. And so ultimately, we pay what they end up saying, and that's unfortunate.
All right, John, thank you. Tracy, we'll start with you on the next question, which is, what, if anything, would you like to see happen to eastbound and westbound State Road 60, also known as 20th Street, 20th Place, and the Twin Pairs?
Well, I think safety is paramount, but I don't think there's anything right now that really needs to be done to it. I think that as long as we're making sure that there's adequate safety, it tends to be a pretty divisive issue. It's, you know, come up on, you know, many, many times in the past. So I would say that it's not, you know, paramount to this particular election. I think as long as we are making sure that people are safe when they're crossing, that we need to focus on Three Corners and not make the Twin Pairs the major. That we need to focus on three corners and not make the twin pairs the major issue.
Thank you. John?
Ask that question. You know, I spend a lot of time on the road looking at different communities. And one of the things that I've been impressed with is communities that have thought outside the box. And realize that we don't have to have, you know, three lane thoroughfares going two directions to serve the traffic volume that we have there. I think, you know, one of my big issues is this parking, the downtown parking is a nightmare. At the evening, the beach parking is, continues to be a problem. You know, and it's going to be worse during this season. The more residents we have that are moving to the county side of our city limits. They're all coming into the city, either for the nightlife or the beach or the shopping. So that avenue can be redesigned to a two lane system with a right-hand lane, the right-hand lane in each direction with parking behind a continuous green bicycle lane. I've seen it successfully done, you know, throughout Florida. And also I was just in Boston and New York City last week. And the number of vehicles that are using those bicycle lanes is incredible. I mean, they got scooters in them, they have bicycles in them. I mean, I even saw bicycles pulling tractors with goods on them. So, I mean, it's a very functional way and get people out of these cars. We don't need the people in the cars all the time. And right now, if you ride a bike on 60, it's pretty dangerous.
Thank you, John. Bob?
Well, as you know, the twin pairs are near and dear to my heart. That's where my chamber office is right on the corner there with 14th Avenue. And it is a race track right now. The key point to make here is that it's in the, it's in the state's plan right now, next year to repave it. And the, the state approached us, FDOT approached us, the city, and asked if we wanted to make any changes to it. And as has been mentioned, we've talked about it forever and so forth. And the council, without making a motion exactly, made it very, very clear that the council is not in favor of narrowing the road at all. What Matt Mitz is working with on a regular basis with the representative FDOT to improve the safety. They want to put some more lights in, some locks in near the courthouse and that kind of thing. And one thing I'd like them to see them do is to time the lights. As I lived in New York City, the way in, in a number of states, Northern Boulevard is controlled the speed was they, they timed the lights such that if you went over the speed, you'd get stopped at every light going down the road. So my view is that it should be repaved. I think it's a major thoroughfare and he's used to it. And what people don't realize, if you narrow those pairs, all these, like the Cultural Arts Village and all these other areas adjacent to it are going to see more traffic. If you were to block or slow down the traffic, I don't mean slow down in speed, but I mean, just made it harder to go up and down there. They will go off onto the side streets and that's not going to make anybody happy at all. So.
Thank you, Bob. We'll start with John on this one. It's a long, it's a long question, but I'm going to go for it. In recent years, commercial property along Ocean Drive by Con Beach, you know, the old ice cream shop. Also on Royal Palm Point and elsewhere has been raised and replaced by condominiums. A large storage unit is being built on prime property along State Road 60 across from the police station. Are you okay with this kind of stuff? If not, what can be done about stuff like this in the future?
Well, as a past chairman of the planning and zoning board of the city of Vero Beach. You know, you are hunk, hamstrung by existing ordinances that are outdated and don't really do the job that they originally were intended to do. Development today is totally different than it was when the majority of these ordinance was written. And Mr. Jeffries has, has done a yeoman's job of selecting certain ordinances and bringing them forth to the planning and zoning board so that we can take a reading on them, see what they really say. It's the old say, what does it say? Can it be interpreted different ways? And that, I believe, is some of the issues that we're dealing with on these larger parcels. You know, the fact that a large storage facility is going up on 60 is disappointing. My wife looked at that property and asked me to buy it so many times, so many times, but I, I said no, because the highest and best use for that property in my mind was apartments. Because we need more lower income housing, or not lower income, but affordable is the real term. Affordable housing in the central area of downtown. And that would have been a perfect place for it. But now that opportunity is gone. I think that anybody that owns a property, you know, I believe I'm a property rights person. If the code says you can build this, then, you know, I end up having to vote for it. Because I don't want to get into a lawsuit and drag it out.
Thanks, John. Bob, would you like me to repeat the question?
That is an area that is a great concern to me since even before I got on council. In my weekly meetings with Monty Falls and John Turner and often Jason Jeffries, I bring this up all the time. I even go back to the folks that wanted to put a restaurant across from Bob. Did not believe that our zoning laws would allow them to put that in there in one of the more congested areas with, with totally inadequate parking in the area. We really address and upgrade of, of our zoning laws and what's permissible on one property. It is, it's just, it, it just hasn't risen to the, the Jason Jeffries and his limited staff to really go after that. Should I get elected, reelected that I intend to continue pushing in that area? And we really need to address it. And you just raised a few of the issues, Larry. It's just all over the place that you see. And abuses and, and that Royal Palm Point is just so disappointing. That could be one of the greatest walking people to go to restaurants and, and just go walking up and down. And that park at the end there with the fountain is absolutely fantastic. I want to mention one thing about parking because that keeps coming up and so forth. One thing that I'm very pleased that the city did is we bought a license plate scanner for the police department. And the parking enforcement officer now doesn't have to get out and chalk all these cars. He just drives down the street or she. And able to document that that car is in that position for a long time. And I've been kind of pushing that we should put a press release out on it in the six months following that going on, the number of tickets increased by double. And all that's doing is that's going to force the people that used to move because they saw the chalk mark down on Ocean and on Main Street. And we've moved, I've even seen parking up inside areas now that used to just park on the street. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Bob. And I'll get to parking in just a minute. But we'll, let's go back to the, the land use or zoning issue. We'll, we'll let Tracy have an opportunity to answer that question. What do you think can be done, Tracy, if anything?
So I think if you want to change zoning, you have to be preemptive about it. You can't, you know, take away somebody's property rights once they, you know, have already purchased the property. You, if you're thinking ahead of time that you want more walkable communities and fewer condos, then you have to be proactive about that. And you have to get the zoning and, and the codes to match what that looks like. And so if I were elected, I'd be working very hard with Jason Jeffries because he is a brilliant man when it comes to this. And I think that being proactive with him would result in some zoning changes and moving forward on still, you know, keeping the quality of Vero here, but also, you know, updating what needs to happen so that you don't run into situations where you have a giant storage facility or too many condos, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Bob, here's, here's the opportunity to talk about parking. So I'd like to go on a scale of one to five. One is it's not a problem at all. Five is it's a huge problem. Okay? So I'd like to get your rankings, each of you. I'd like to get your rankings and we'll start with Bob. What is the ranking in downtown and then what is the ranking on the beach? And if you want to talk about any of that, certainly go ahead, but in the downtown, one to five, on the beach, one to five, one is not a problem, five is a problem. So break it out that way if you could. Bob?
On the parking?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Limited to parking and so forth. I think it's a problem. It's, it's kind of like a three, I guess, in both areas because it's so cyclical. There are many, many times when there's just no problem at all in front of my chamber and so forth. But on Friday night at four o'clock during the peak season, people are after specials and all, they have to park on the side streets. Now, is that a problem? I was born and brought up in a city, Cambridge, Massachusetts. And you didn't get to park in Harvard Square right next to the Harvard co-op every day. You had to use a parking lot or a deck around the corner. We are, some of our merchants are somewhat spoiled if they believe that, that there should be, you know, part, an empty parking place in front of their place at all times. So it's the, and the consultant studies that we've had, the C's had even before I got involved, indicated that it was a very, a very cyclical issue, if you would. There are many times during the year when there's only one car ahead of you at the traffic light. And there's ample parking up and down Ocean Drive and so forth. So I think those are issues. And again, just to say, you know, that we've had all sorts of proposals, we've had proposed down on Cardinal and the side streets headed toward A1A there to take people's front lawns and turn those into parking areas. I really don't support that. I'd like to see us continue to do things like this parking kid thing that forces the people at the restaurants and the people who work in the shops to get more aggressive and, and park. Even in front of my place here, early in the morning on, on Ocean Drive, you see people parking in front of the boardwalk and walking down to their jobs at the restaurants because it's unlimited parking there. So I think we need to do, and I would say the same thing is in the area of three, I guess, in both areas. And the one thing I add is it's going to be very difficult to convince all of the taxpayers throughout the whole city to spend an awful lot of money doing things that are only to the advantage of the merchants and people like me that are on 14th Avenue.
Thanks, Bob. Tracy, how would you rank each area, mainland and then beach in terms of the problem? And then any other comments you might have?
Sure. Um, I think it depends on your season. We're a seasonal community. So you could be a two during the summer, both downtown and beach. Or you could be a three or a four during season where you may, you know, some people may have to walk a block or so to get to a restaurant on Ocean Drive or, you know, same thing downtown. I think that they spent so much time doing that parking analysis and getting some really good feedback. There's just been no follow-through. There's like this beautiful low hanging fruit that can happen. But you need to be proactive and change the code so you can have side street parking with, you know, permeable surfaces. And, you know, and those are the inexpensive, environmentally friendly things that can enhance that. Also, why, why are we not talking about golf carts? Or doing something like that? You know, you have communities all like Boca Grand that, you know, mimic our, you know, same kind of feel, home feel. And golf, golf carts work beautifully in those kinds of communities. And we should explore that too because that can also help with parking. So I think there's a lot that can be done. There has to be a proactive follow-through though. It has to be a priority.
Thank you. Um, we'll go to John. John, one to five in each of those areas, five is a, is a a really bad problem. One is it's not a problem at all. What do you think?
I would say it's an average over the year of four in Central Beach. Having had my office on Bugan Villa for 17 years, I mean, I've lived it constantly. Downtown, I would say it's, it's probably a three during the day downtown. But on the, on the evenings, even, not even counting Friday, I mean, Thursday, Wednesday. You can't find a parking space because there's more and more people coming that, in that area. And there's more and more restaurants and other businesses that are opening up. It's going to be, you know, a continuous problem. The, I mean, we've got to account for the people that are coming from outside the city limits. And that population is constantly increasing. I mean, you talk to the, in the River County Building Department, the number of plans that they're approving on a weekly basis is much more than any of us could imagine just three short years ago. And it's only going to get worse because it's a subdivision, it's subdivision, subdivision. So it's 20, 20 lots at a time. Those people are going to come downtown and they're also going to go to the beach. The parking studies, it is woefully sad that, and yeah, and I can speak as a consulting engineer, that recommendations that are made by engineers that are paid for by the municipality don't take their recommendations and implement them. It's a total waste of money. I think that, you know, when I get elected, I would go through and have Monty pull out all of the previous parking studies back to five, six years ago. And let's see what the recommendations were, why we didn't implement them. Take what we can from those plans and actually sit down in a workshop with other engineers in the community, which there's a lot of them. They'll be willing to sit down and, and help us come up with different ideas, different plans. There's a lot of new ideas out there. See them in the coastal communities. You know, some people aren't going to be happy. But, you know, others are going to be ecstatic because they're going to be able to find a place to park at a reasonable time and a reasonable distance from their location.
Thanks, John. Anybody else on the editorial board have a question? I, I've got a couple more that I could ask. Anybody else have any? Okay, doesn't look like it. So let's go with Tracy on this one. What, if any improvements should be made to any parks or in recreation programs in the city?
So I, I think we do, we have a lot of parks here in the city. And I think the improvements that you can do are the, are the inexpensive, environmentally friendly ones, like creating those rain gardens, especially those parks that are along the waters and whatnot that affect the lagoon. I think those would be the first improvements that I would make. I do think we need to address the homeless situation. That seems to be a big issue when it comes to some of the parks. So that would also be a top priority on my list as well.
Thank you. John?
The homeless issue is a major issue. You know, my office was relocated to 19th, right near Bob, a few months ago. And I'd noticed firsthand that the homeless situation has gotten a lot worse than anybody really imagines. There was somebody homeless that was in our building up on the third floor losing it, that we had to call the cops. So, I mean, when you walk down through downtown in the daytime, you can see the homeless problem. And there's really, I mean, I've talked to the city about it. There's really not much that they can do if they're in a public park, as long as they're dressed appropriately. They do break into the, to the meters or the electrical outlets, even though they're locked and charge their cell phones. That's why a lot of them sit around down there. But we've got to rein in this homeless problem. Otherwise, people aren't going to go downtown to those parks. And it, and it's going to affect the establishments eventually. I don't, I haven't heard any complaints about that, but it's definitely going to come. The other thing I think we, we've got so many beautiful parks, so many great facilities that are being underutilized. The Berberside Park, for instance, that park is very underutilized. The the ladies with the baby carriage. The, the ladies with the baby carriages, I forget what they're called, baby buggy parade. I mean, they did a great job in rehabilitating that park and the Ocean Drive Park with kid-friendly and playground equipment. But we got a great tennis center there that's totally underutilized. I mean, they have a few people playing and, but no leagues, no standard group that can get together. It's just friends of friends of friends. And I think that, you know, if we started doing more tennis clinics, more team concentrations, I mean, those type of things can actually be moneymakers for cities. I mean, the city of Fort Lauderdale has Holiday Park, you know? That's where Chris Everett learned to play. So they made a lot of money off of that park.
Thank you, Bob.
I think our parks are absolutely fantastic and I promote them every chance I get to anybody coming by the chamber or coming in and so forth. And they are utilized more than we think, I believe, if you would. Saturday, for instance, Riverside Park, they had a great run there, if you would, for a benefit of a charity. And it went from like, I think, eight to like 9:30. At 10 o'clock, my daughter that lives here in town has a two-year-old and it was her birthday Saturday. So we had a birthday party for she, for little Kennedy and 11 of our friends. So we had a little 12, we had 12 two-year-olds running around. And it, for me, it gave me a new sense of what herding cats was all about. But the park was beautiful, the pavilion they were in had running water and it was adjacent to the playground and they all just had a great time. And while we were using the playground with a little two-year-old, a number of other kids came and used the property as well. So I think that we just need to continue to maintain them. There's maybe a little cement work that needed to be done on that particular, in that particular bench and so forth. But I think that they're great and I, I really have a problem with people that say we have enough or too many parks. And then in the same breath, they talk about the growth in the county and the new subs that are going, subdivisions that are going in. And it's always just amazing to me how many kids we have in the school system. And I just want to mention one other thing, give a little plug to my Rotary Club. We're pulling together a group. We talk about public-private partnerships, if you would. And the Rotary Club and several other, including the Masons and so forth, want to participate in putting a park-like and an exercise thing in that third corner, the three corners near the, near the power station there and so forth. And we're visiting, it was a, we've been visiting other parks and other kid playgrounds, if you would, to move forward with that. So I'm not sure. I think Parks and Rec does an excellent job and I'm so pleased that we haven't sold any of those properties and that we're going to put in a budget to train them.
Thank you. I have one more question and then after that I'll give you an opportunity to do a summary. But this next question, I hope it can be very short. Maybe give me one, one neighborhood and then a one-sentence explanation, if you, if you have one, if you can think of it. But the question, and we'll start with John on this. Question is, is there a city neighborhood that has been overlooked? I mean, we talked about a lot of these different neighborhoods, but is there one that has been sort of overlooked for too long that you can think of and what should be done there, if anything?
I'd say the, I don't know the name of the area specifically, but the, the area south of 60, west of downtown is overlooked. It's right in the heart of the, or just outside the entertainment district there. There's lower affordable housing there that's older and in need of repair. Very bad situation right through there.
Thanks, John. Bob?
There's an area right by the airport that we inherited from the Navy. There's a 60 or so unit mobile home park that's buried in behind Walking Tree. It's on city-owned property and we've just maintained it. And it's a revenue source, if you would, and it's, it's been very much overlooked. The sewage problem there, they have to clean out the pipes regularly. And so I think we're going to get some help from the FAA on that one also. The FAA has decided and they're starting to promulgate rules, if you would, that are going to limit residential property on property owned by airports and stuff. So that's the one I'd like to see addressed as soon as possible.
Thank you. Tracy?
I would agree with John. I think that south side of Route 60 in that particular area where, near the high school and whatnot, there's also flooding issues there as well. And so that would probably be the area that I would focus on the most. You have all kinds of situations going on there with the affordable housing and the high school flooding, entertainment, like there's, there's a lot going on there. And a lot of people want to be in that particular area. So I'd focus probably my most efforts in that area.
Thank you. Finally, and we'll start with Bob on this. Is there something that we haven't covered that you'd like us to cover? Something you dislike us or the voters who might watch this to know about you? Just sort of a summary.
I'd just say to the city, I think the number of things that we've been doing to improve it, the number of things that we've done on the Indian River Lagoon, if you would. I'm really pleased Stormwater Utility. And we've had a number of unfunded projects in the capital budget since I've been around. And finally, we can dedicate some money and go after those projects. And they are projects, some of which are shovel-ready, just happened at the money. The second street sweeper that we got with federal funds, I think, is a real, a real favorable impact on the lagoon. And one other thing that hadn't been mentioned is we've got a project going to take several million gallons a day out of the main relief canal and clean them up and use them for reuse water, which again, will take away some of the need for pulling water out of the aquifers and so forth. I think the plans, and I'm very optimistic about moving forward with the fixing up of the marina. That's another one of those items to, to overuse the term, kick the can down the road. We've done that too long. I'm really pleased that Corporate Air is in a public-private partnership that's going after a U.S. Customs facility at the airport. I think that's going to be a major, a major add for us, if you would. And even though I disagree with the way it's being rolled out, if you would, in the referendum, I do believe that it's a positive thing that after seven years of looking at that power plant that is unsalvageable, in my view, and that whole property down there just sitting there with us mowing the grass, but totally inaccessible on the north side of the bridge, totally inaccessible to anybody and so forth. So those are some of the issues and some of the other things that have been brought up here that that's why I'm running for reelection, to try to keep the momentum up on those activities and more.
Thank you. Tracy, any final words?
Sure. So three corners is, should be a top priority of every candidate that's running. It is my top priority. It's my one, two, and three. It affects the finances of the city and the future of our city. I am the only candidate who actually has gone through an RFP process like this, being part of the hospital district. We actually went through a similar-sized project trying to get new management for our Indian River Medical Center. And I visited different potential candidates. We interviewed, did negotiations. There was a lot of in-depth, hard work and investigation and research and relationship building that went into that. So having that as, as something that I've done before, I think that, that puts me ahead of the game for this particular process for three corners. And I'm, I can't wait to serve our community and use those efforts towards this particular project. I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you. John, we'll give you the final word.
Yay. Having been a resident for 17 years and been involved with the city for many of those years, I feel it in our best interest to start looking ahead, to bring on younger individuals to our boards, you know, the Planning and Zoning Board, Code Enforcement, et cetera, et cetera, Finance. You know, when I go to those meetings and I look at the people that are there, I'm wondering, where is the rest of the citizens? Where are the young people that are going to be the future of this community? They're not there. Why are they not there? Why are they not involved? We need their participation. Again, going back to three corners, we did have young people involved. They did serve on the committee. They did have their input heard. And we need more of that. We need the city council to quit putting on their friends and neighbors on these boards and reach out into the community and get these younger people, these talented, technologically advanced young people to serve on these boards so we can get some new ideas. I mean, that's why we keep getting the same ideas repackaged by somebody else over and over and over again. I mean, it's just quite sad to tell you the truth. And until that process stops, and it needs to stop with the next city council. I mean, I would make it a point to make sure that the majority of my appointees would be under the age of 40. And people that are committed, they've moved back or, or stayed here and they're committed to this community, but they just are not heard. And I think that is really the takeaway that we need to all have. Because as many of us approach the end of our service life, as you say in engineering, we've got to have somebody to replace us. And what better person is that, that we, that somebody that comes up through the ranks, comes up through the boards and learns what it takes to run a city?
Thank you, John. Thank you, Tracy. And thank you, Bob. We appreciate your coming on today, spending the time with us and for volunteering to run a campaign. We know it's not easy, but it's an essential part of our society. So to everybody out there, please continue to visit tcpalm.com for the latest on the elections and good luck on the campaign trail.
Thank you.